Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our August 7th, 2024 regular meeting of council. It feels like fall is upon us and summer is over. I think, I know, I'm sorry, but I just was feeling it this morning. So maybe if Randy could bless us with a little last minute summer prayer, that we could hold on to this heat for a little bit longer, that'd be wonderful. Before we start, I will ask everyone to stand, or I'll call the meeting to order at 9:02 a.m., and I'll ask everyone to stand for the singing of our national anthem. Good morning. Come on in, welcome. Nice to see you brought the team with you this morning. Are there any additions to our agenda this morning? From administration? Do we have any additions?
None, you were.
Okay. I believe we have a delegation addition from Mr. Randy Rye this morning. We will add that under our delegation 7.2. Did you get that, Nancy? Okay, perfect. Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the agenda for the August 7th, 2024 regular meeting of council minutes? Thank you very much, Councilor Kamana. All in favor? That is carried. Any corrections or amendments to the July 24th, 2024 regular meeting of council? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt that? Thank you very much. Councilor McGee, all in favor? That is carried. We have no proclamations or public hearings this morning. We do have two delegations. Our first up is our RCMP delegation, Mr. Ryan, or Stargent Ryan Hoopner. We'd like to say a big congratulations on your posting.
Yeah, that's, uh, this thing got pulled forward. That's scary stuff. You guys are stuck with me for a while now.
We're very excited that it's you, and we want to say congratulations. We're happy to have you continue working in the community and working with us, and we're just excited to continue the relationship. Very happy for you, so congratulations again.
Well, thank you for that. We are very happy as well. Both my wife and my family and I, we're happy to stay here. It's been home for a long time, and we've chosen to raise our kids here, and I'm excited to continue to do that, so.
Fantastic.
We're excited to stay here.
Good, and do you want to tell us who you have with you this morning?
Yes, actually, I'll do that first. So we're gonna do, first individual here is Tyler. Tyler, he's been here almost a year, but I haven't been able to drag him in here to meet you all yet, just by the way our schedule works. But Tyler came to us from Peace River, so he's got about five years in. He had four years in Peace River. He came as an experienced police officer. And next to him, we have Vish, who got here July 18, 21?
Oh, wow.
21st. So he's just started with us, came from Depot. So he's working with Tyler. Tyler will train him for the first six months. So that is Vish and Tyler.
Well, welcome, and thanks for coming, and thanks for doing work in our community. We appreciate it, and we hope that we don't keep you too busy.
That is the goal. So I'll just touch base quickly on the stats. They're up there. As you can see, we're seeing still kind of an overall decrease in our property crime, which continues to be exciting news. We've had 32% decrease in motor vehicle thefts. Break-in errors are kind of staying the same. There's just a 3% decrease, but that actually only works out to be like one less. And then our theft unders are way down this year. It's 47% drop. So overall, that brings us to a 2% decrease in our criminal code offenses still, which last year was a down year, so we're kind of holding steady there, which is good. You do note that we're seeing a 24% increase in our other criminal code. That is our mischief and our disturbing the peace, and that is, put plainly, that's our homeless people that are sleeping in banks or sleeping in vestibules and places. We're getting, we almost get woken up daily to a call about that. So that's something we probably are gonna have to tackle as a community. There, we have odds in warming parks, but these people are banned from there, so they actually have no place to go. So we'll have to come up with a strategy to deal with that. Just because that, I mean, that's, it's not, we scored as a mischief and it serves the peace, which then shows it as a criminal code file. Really, they're not doing any damage. That's scored that way because they're not allowing others to enjoy that property, and that's mischief. They're not doing any damage, they're just sleeping in there overnight, and then they can, at times, certain people can be of our population that could be a little aggressive, intimidating, and that gets us called to come in there and remove them. So that is the increase there, which is why we're seeing our total criminal code offenses not decrease the same as what it would be really, because it's keeping our stats up a little bit, but it's really nothing calls other than it is an issue we're having in the community. So we'll have to come up with some plans to tackle that. The other thing I want to highlight is, the stats I get from our operational strategy branch don't capture our impaired driving, so it shows there's a total of three roadside suspensions on the one page. June brings us to eight to nine for the year. That's correct only in our roadside suspensions for 72 hour, which means you blow under the legal limit, or 24 hour. And there's nowhere on there that captures our impaired driving stats, which are also now, it's all provincial sanction within the province. It's not criminal code unless a certain criteria is met. I think we've had three actual criminal ones. But we've done 27 provincial impaired over 80 sanctions. So between the two, we're upwards around, that's till June, so we're upwards about 40 where impaired drive investigations proactive done by us. So just because we're not seeing it there, impaired driving is still alive in Drayton Valley as a community. It's, it's, people are still choosing to commit that offense, probably nightly. Yeah, we're pulling in seven or eight a month that we're finding just out on the road doing proactive, so. There's still lots of it going on, but it does mean that we're out and capturing it as well. The only other thing I concluded in the package this month is we got a report, I think if we keep scrolling down, our crime severity index. So this is calculated, basically, it takes, takes your, takes the crimes that we're being called to, and it scores them as, to score the severity of the crime in the community. And you can see ours actually dropped from last year to 154.3, and last year was 178.9. So that was our stats for last year, 2022, or 178.9, 2023, or at 154.3. There's a little chart there, the drivers of the crime severity index, breaking enters, assaults, frauds, any sort of violent crime would drive that up. So you can kind of see in the little chart there, we peaked in kind of 2018, 19, 17, 18, 19, that's when our stats peaked as well. And we've been on a steady decline. The biggest contributor to that decline is a decrease in breaking enters from 2023 to 2022. And other than that, some mischief to property. But the provincial average, we're still above the provincial average in that provincial average is 103. So we're at 154. That is not far off from your Edson's hint in this area. But it's just a little, another, there's information on the back for council if you want to read just about how that works and what weight is put on it. We use this to determine basically resourcing. They'll use a, like a criminal call per member, case load per member stat, and then they'll use a crime severity index and kind of compare it because that tells you how much work each file is or what the members are carrying. But we are trending down, and we've come a long ways down since 2017, so that's good. We hope to continue trending in that direction. Other than that, I will take questions.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions? Councilor Kamana?
Morning, Sergeant Woodman. Congratulations as well.
Thank you.
I know that I've been reading a little bit about motor vehicle thefts, and PETA started to do more and more on that front. Has there been any, I guess, new tools given to you or to the RCMP? And, you know, would that, I guess, help us?
Yeah, so you're asking of motor vehicle thefts here?
Right.
Yeah. Motor vehicle thefts are so dependent on who's out of jail, I find, and our public offenders here. We've been lucky in the municipality that our motor vehicle thefts are down. My provincial stats actually don't show the same. So right now, our public offenders are staying out of Drayton. I think probably we have a stronger police presence here. The rural area is hard to even patrol because it's so big, and Drayton's either easier to patrol, and it's easier. We, so as attachment, we identify hotspots and we'll patrol those hotspots. Drayton, that's a lot easier. A hotspot patrol in the rural is hard because it's so big. So those are, so our thefts are down in municipality. Whether that stays down or not, we hope so. We hope to continue doing those hotspot patrols, education on lock it or lose it. Don't leave your vehicles running. We don't see that so much in the summer, but we do see it when it's really hot, where vehicles are left running with the AC on, right? And then we get the opposite in the winter, where they're left running to stay warm. But we've been combating that by just, yeah, targeting our hotspots for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor McGee?
I want to get, I'm really pleased that you're here and you're staying with us, Ryan. It's a pleasure to have you in our community, and it's important, I think, for you and your family because they've grown here, and I think that's really important, pretty, pretty special, by the way, for me. The point you raised about mischief, sleeping in ATMs. We know, yeah, so when I read the column in the Free Press, it's generally, I go, oh, yeah. And it's, it's so repetitive that your, you know, your view on, you know, we maybe have to do something, try to do something, but I have no clue on what that might be, how the strategy might work. Because it's, it's, it's not about ticketing, and because it just, there's no revenue to go with the ticket and the time, you know? So you just sort of, you almost feel like it's just what it is. And, but yet, we should be thinking about something to sort of encourage or move or change or, because there's, there's a few folks that, that really take a lot of time, both for our emergency guys, you guys, our town people, right, those kinds of things. And I, I don't know what the strategy is, but I, if you've got an idea at all, or you're just working on it.
Yeah, I think, I think with those individuals, it has to be a community strategy. We have a role to play there, and at some point, maybe we have to look at some enforcement, whether it is ticketing. It's hard because, like you said, we can't get water from a stone, right? Like, but, yeah, I think there has to be some sort of intervention strategy, whether that is trespass notices, and then we move down the trespass line. The complicated part of that whole process is where do they go? And that's where we kind of end up as police. Yeah, we could go down the trespassing route, start ticketing, and eventually, maybe you could get them in custody, but does, is that helping this person to go to jail? Right? And so it's not, it's not gonna change anything. They're gonna spend six weeks in jail and be right back in our community, and no different. So where do, where do they go if they have nowhere to go? Right? It's kind of the question we have. And from a human perspective, when we come deal with that person, we know they have nowhere else to go. And so then we, we get kind of caught with what are we supposed to do with them other than move them along? But I do think it's something that, as a community, we probably should come up with. One of those individuals that is called about all the time, we've tried to sign them up for like integrated habitual vendor management program, and, but that individual has a role to play there, too. You can try and wrap the services around them all you can, and unless they access those or take advantage of that, there's, we've tried with that, and we'll continue to try, but until that individual takes a step forward as well and participates in that program, I don't know what we do about that.
Yeah, and I, I don't have, but the community solution has to be, you know, I think even sometimes, I think the community begins to understand, and, you know, if someone is asleep in the ATM, you know, but people are intimidated, as you said.
Yep, 100%, and, and they can be aggressive. It's survival. The, these are survivors, they know how to survive, and it's survivors, they'll survive.
Gentlemen?
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Ryan. That's good, that's all. I just wanted to explore that just a little bit. Thanks.
Any other questions? Just a question up by Seasons. Are you seeing an increase in crime in that area of town at all? Are you getting any additional calls, or?
We haven't actually, no.
Nothing, no.
We haven't seen an increase in crime. No, I'd say no. No.
Just wondering, you know, how long, I know there's an encampment up there, it's on private property, just wondering how long it's been there and why all of a sudden there seems to be a lot of chatter there? So that's why I was just wondering, has there been an increase in break-in enters or theft, or?
I don't, we haven't seen an increase in break-in or thefts in that area. We've, I think it's suddenly become visible.
Okay.
It's gotten bigger.
That's.
That came up after the coach closed.
Okay, okay.
That's when that one went up.
Okay, so no one's reporting if there is theft, it hasn't been reported?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you for coming this morning. Congratulations again, and we'll see you around the community.
Awesome, thank you.
And if there's anything, you know, like you said, that we can do to be working together to, you know, solve these issues, you know, I think that's the best solution is, we're, we're not gonna solve it, we don't have those answers, but if we can continue to work together and kind of bounce ideas off each other, I think that's the best way to deal with, you know, a lot of these things when it comes to our homelessness, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, enjoy your day. Thanks for coming. Take care. Next up, 7.2, Mr. Randy Rye. Good morning and welcome. I know, I was wondering, you guys usually out a little bit more. Do you want to sit down there? Pull up a chair, go ahead.
Direct, ah, part of the reclamation is, they gotta cover the whole area where their school was and the parking lot with, with basically dirt. And I thought, well, that doesn't work well for us. As you know, on Sunday, yeah, you know, in the winter months, we're averaging, you know, about 200 in attendance, and that parking lot is full. And also during the week, the Shale Clinic uses that parking lot as well. And so I reached out to people in this room, plus our MLA and Brad Volkman, the superintendent of Wild Rose. And, and so, pretty much if, correct me if I'm wrong, but the consensus was, it doesn't make sense to cover up the parking lot. And to backdate a bit, Dr. Giddy and I talked about three, four weeks ago, and he was gonna put a proposal into town council and about securing that parking lot some way, because without it, they're gonna be in trouble, and of course, on Sundays, we'd be in trouble. Also, just to highlight, when we have a community parade, there, that, our parking lot and that parking lot's full, or when they do the block party downtown, our parking lot and that parking lot is full. It really becomes a, I, I know that it was a school board property, but it really is a community parking lot. And so I guess what I'm asking is for favor, that we could come up with a solution to keep that parking lot. And, yeah, I, I don't know what else to say, whether it's a long-term lease, whether it evolves into a community parking lot where everybody uses it. Purchase, I don't know. But I also said to our MLA, if, if we couldn't reach an agreement and there was a development that's gonna happen five, 10 years from now there, I mean, we would flip the bill and cover it with dirt. But, but I'm just asking you, please, leave the parking lot as a parking lot.
Thank you very much for coming this morning. Are there any questions? We had chatted a little bit about this over the weekend and yesterday, and as you know, the lands that you're speaking about, ooh, is that us? Currently aren't owned by the town of Drayton Valley. There is a sale that's being negotiated, which is a closed discussion, so we will be talking about this a little bit later, and then we can kind of get back to you with an answer. And we just really appreciate you coming in today and reaching out to all of us and, and expressing your concern. The parking lot has been there for many years, and I would agree that the businesses use it, the church use it. It's, you know, it's, it's very convenient there for everybody. So, yeah, it wouldn't make sense to cover it up with dirt and, and then lose that parking because then we'd be seeing vehicles all along 50th there, and then we'd probably be in a, in a bit of a, a different situation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely, yeah.
The, I guess, I guess what the urgency was, I'm, and I really appreciate that you guys got back to me on Saturday and up until this point. I guess the urgency is, is that contractor said that this week it was gonna happen. And so it, it's yet most important that we, we move as quickly as we can. And it's, on my understanding, if, if, I know that the deal's not done for our town to purchase that, but a letter to the Minister of Infrastructure would, talking to the Wild Rose Superintendent, Brad Volkman, it would carry a lot of weight to say, don't cover the parking lot. So that's what I'm asking.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Yeah, absolutely, and then we'll get back to you, Randy. We appreciate you coming in this morning.
I can go golfing now.
That's right. Enjoy, take care, we'll talk to you soon. That wraps up our delegations this morning, and we'll jump into our decision items. 9.1 is proposed cell tower at 5212 Industrial Road. Mr. Wally Ferris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Douglas is away, so I'll, I'll present his report. So this is for a proposed cell phone tower at 5212 Industrial Road. Rogers, through their Land Solutions, has applied to install a 35-meter monopole cellular tower at 5212 Industrial Road. Rogers is a major player in the cellphone industry, and this tower will extend and improve their service for their customers. Administration supports the efforts to improve cell service and offer consumers more cellular options. Now, the company had originally proposed a 42-meter-high lattice tower, the ones that kind of looked like the Eiffel Tower, but agreed to install a monopole type tower recommended by Administration. Tower will be visible for many residents and business owners in the northwest side of town, but the element, the, the design reduces the visual impact. Rogers conducted a thorough and extensive public consultation and did not receive any responses for or against the proposed cellphone tower at this location. With that, there's, there's more information on the communication and consultation that took place. Don't think I need to go through that. But the staff respectfully recommends that council pass a resolution concurring with the proposed cellphone tower as defined in AIR 24-162. So with that, we would, if council approves this, we, council would sign a letter of concurrence, which Rogers then submits to the federal government to get their final approval to install the tower.
Thank you very much for that. And you did say that the town or any of the internal referrals have not received any comments in regards to this, or I guess there was 13 mailouts as well? There was no comments?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for administration, for Mr. Ferris? Councilor McGee?
I, I missed the meeting when it first came to the agenda. And so thus, I missed the discussion about the Eiffel Tower or the, or the shorter tower. I assume the shorter tower just makes sense and maybe costs a little bit more, but it's not so, so high. So is that, that's one question, yeah.
So it didn't, it didn't make it to, to council. Our development officer had, you know, had been dealing with Rogers for, I don't know, probably a month or so, and had recommended that we, you know, we, we really would like to see the monopole for, it's in the center of town, and it's a beautification issue when you put the lattice ones up, so. But they, they pushed back and said, no, it's too expensive, it won't be as good. There was lots of reasons. So our initial, our initial report a few, a couple of weeks ago was to, for council not to give a letter of concurrence because they were just really looking to save money. So the, the gentleman involved in that asked us to, to pull the report and that they would resubmit another application with the monopole. So that's, that's what we did.
Okay, aesthetics.
Aesthetics.
And the, the other thing is that I, I know that if you get beyond the boundaries of Drayton Valley, such as Buck Lake, where I'm, the coverage is terrible, but this isn't helpful for that area. This is helpful for the town to have, what? Have better service, faster service, clearer service, I, I know.
And, and more options, is our understanding.
So more options on yourself, though?
More, more options of carriers, probably.
Oh, okay, so competition.
I honestly, counselor, I'm not really sure how, how it works, but that's, that's what they've indicated, is that it will give our, you know, our town residents more options, better service for sure, given a better coverage of the tower. But, yeah, they, they indicate in their, in their information that there'd be more options, so I'm assuming that there's more barriers. I know that my personal cellphone, I'm with Fido, and they piggyback on, on one of the main carriers, so, so that might help my service. Okay, so they'll, they'll piggyback on Telus or Rogers, and unfortunately, sometimes if it's really, really busy, my calls will drop because I'm not a, I'm not a Rogers or Telus, so it's Fido piggybacks.
Okay, well, that's, that's a good answer. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Councilor Kamana?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a little bit more information about that. Yes, uh, you know, because Telus did the infrastructure for Drayton Valley. They own the infrastructure as far as I know and, um, Rogers and other carriers rent that from them. But now they are trying to put their own, uh, with Rogers coming in here. So it should improve the Rogers', uh, um, I, I guess, services for, for the town. That's kind of the competition piece that, uh, will come. But, you know, as a Telus dealer myself, I'll say Telus is still good. But other than that, I was just wondering, um, about the, uh, did we consult the, uh, neighbors and, you know, they know that this is coming? Has there been any, uh, concerns?
Thank you, Counselor Kamana. Through you, through you, Madam Mayor, yes. Um, as the reports indicated, uh, the consultation took place. There was a bunch of, uh, there was a number of mailouts and they have a requirement to, uh, consult, uh, any property owners within a certain radius and that took place with zero comments back.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Move ahead.
Sure. Go ahead, Counselor McGee.
Uh, no.
Um, Madam Mayor, um, I would make, uh, a motion that council pass a resolution concurring with the proposed cellphone tower as defined in AIR 24162.
Thank you very much for that. There's a motion made by Counselor McGee. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? And I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Uh, next up is 9.2, Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board Member Appointment, Brazo County Council Member. This is, uh, Mr. Ferris as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yes, uh, this is to appoint a library board member. Um, so the, uh, Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board established, uh, under Town Bylaw 99-15 calls for the appointment of a minimum of three and a max, a maximum of five members at large, uh, with each to serve a three-year term. Competition board, uh, sorry, the composition of the boards shall consist of seven, but no less than five members who shall be appointed by resolution of council for a three-year term. However, board members appointed from council may serve a one-year term. The board shall be consulted as follows. Two members, uh, being one each from the town of Drayton Valley and one from Brazo County Council. Five or a minimum of three members from the community at large. Counselor Gunderson was appointed correctly with the resolution in May of 2023. This appointment expired in October of '23, October 31st of 2023. And the appointment should have been completed at the organizational meeting that we had in October, but was missed. Um, so with that, uh, with that, um, administration respectfully recommends that council appoint County Counselor Glenn Gunderson to the Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board for the remainder of the term ending October 31st, 2024, as defined in Report AIR 24-184. I'll just add that it is the town's responsibility to provide the motion, uh, according to the Library Act. So, uh, that's, that's why that's there.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration? Would you like to make a motion?
Yes.
Counselor Kamana, thank you for that.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that council appoints County Counselor Glenn Gunderson to the Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board for the remainder of the term ending on October 31st, 2024, as defined in Report AIR-24-184. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion?
Just, I can't seem to find in my paper, but, um, we would normally all do this at the same time when they do their, um, appointments and we do our appointments. This, this will go to that, to the end of that appointment so that it fits in the regular schedule, right?
That's correct, Counselor McGee.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
So like our organizational in October and does the county do organizational in October as well at the same time?
Y-yes, they do, but the appointments to the library board, uh, I, while I'm not sure when they do theirs, I'm assuming they do it in, in October as well, but, uh, the appointment to the library board is town's responsibility.
Okay, okay. So we may be doing, oh yeah, it does say, um, it expired, so it will expire again this October then. So we'll see other, Mr. Gunderson come, uh, name come again or somebody else from the county then. There's a motion on the table. Uh, if there's no further comment, question or debate, then I'll call the motion. All in favor, that is carried. And that wraps up our decision items for this morning. A very slim agenda this morning. We'll jump, uh, to council-initiated items. If there's any members of council that have anything to add here. Um, just one, yeah, do you have anything that you want to add? I'm just gonna go through my, um... No, because we have discussion enclosed in regards to that. So Counselor Kamana, did you have something here?
Not, uh, council-initiated, but just, uh, I guess, announcements of that, um, Drayton Valley Cricket Carnival for this year will happen on August 31st. Uh, so just if, uh, anybody's around, uh, if you want to see how cricket's been played in the community, please come and, and have a, have a seat and watch a game or two.
So August 31st, where's it at?
Um, so they, they are planning to be at the same location as last year, which is the Eldorado Grounds, uh, the...
South side?
South side.
South side of the grounds, Eldorado. Um, August 31st, what time?
Uh, it's will be around, uh, starting around 2 o'clock.
2 o'clock? And can anyone join in to play or is it watching or?
It will be watching because there's two teams slated to come from Edmonton and having a, having a friendly cricket match. So.
Oh, nice.
Assuming we will be getting a invite to speak at the, at the opening ceremony as well.
Okay, good. And then, um, there'll probably be, um, some posters or advertising going up around the community for anyone that's wanting to attend as well?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Anybody else have anything here?
Um, I, just one is the, um, the issue around signage and blocking signage, you can't see by and things like that. We're, we're addressing that, um, through the bylaw, folks. Um, uh, the one I raised last week was the one, if you're coming out of the shell by the Tims, there's, um, there's a big black sign that you can't see right. It's, uh, dangerous. And so I, I, I thought maybe they would just move it, but I see it's not moved. And I'm thinking, I'll just go drag it off of there then. Um, but that's not really my role. But, uh, so we can, we can, we can discuss that or whether, whether it's a big issue or bad issue or, I don't know. I just think we should be able to react to a sign that's blocking traffic like today, yesterday or the day before.
Not familiar with that one. The one I thought we were dealing with, uh, late last week was with respect to a tree. Tree was privately owned, so we had to get a hold of the owner to trim the tree back. Um, the, but there are a number of site triangle issues around town. As you drive around, you see those. Um, our, uh, our enforcement officer is, uh, uh, trying to deal with them. Um, but as you know, we work on a complaint-based system. So if we don't see a complaint on those, I've identified a, a couple to him and I know that he's investigating them.
Perfect. Okay, um, I'll just kind of go through my list here. I have a couple of things I could talk about. Um, so I just wanted to bring up again, um, the homeless camp by Seasons. I know that we're all receiving quite a few, uh, messages and phone calls and everything from residents around that area. So I think we maybe just need a little bit of clarity. What I'm hearing is that it is on private property. And so, um, we do have a community standards bylaw. Is there anyone? Maybe Tom, did you want to speak to this a little bit? If, what as a municipality that we can do? Um, the question was for Sergeant Ryan Hoopner this morning, if there's an increase in crime in the area. There doesn't seem to be, and if there is, it's not being reported. So I guess just what we can do. Uh, we do have a couple encampments around the community. Um, this is, uh, I guess it's not a new one. It's been there for some time, but if there's anything that as a municipality that we can do or how we speak to this and everything like that. Thanks, Tom, if you want to go ahead.
Morning, Council. Uh, just in regards to this, um, uh, you are correct in identifying that it is on private property. Uh, the people that are in that camp are family members of the people that own that property. So, um, we are looking at different possibilities on, uh, what legally we can do. Uh, so we are in cons- in consultation with our lawyers right now to get a legal opinion, uh, to, uh, see if we need to go, see if we can get a King's order, a King's Court order. Um, but at this point in time, we're, we're just waiting from, to hear back from our, our lawyers in regards to that. Uh, it's, it's a little bit tricky because, uh, you cannot see the camp from, from a public road. In order for you to be able to see that, you have to go on their property. So the people that are reporting this are actually trespassing on that property. So that is a concern that people are going on to their property and the people that are in the camp have raised that concern. So that is, uh, that's another part of this, uh, situation, which, uh, is a little bit difficult. So that's why we're getting a legal opinion on it.
Okay, perfect. Thanks for clarifying that. I think that helps us speak to it a little bit too, because I thought that it was on our property. So it's on, uh, a resident's property. And then as well, if maybe we can be communicating that if people are trespassing, that they need to be a little bit cautious too. It's unfortunate, but it, it is a little bit of a tricky situation here. So I think we have to just, yeah, um, wait for the response and, um, hopefully it's in our favor that there's something that we can do. I'll go to Counselor Kamana.
Thank you. Um, I've, I've had a few conversations with, uh, uh, residents around there and I live around there as well, as you know. Um, so I guess the, when you say that it, it's not visible from the road, but it is visible from the, the last two houses from there, uh, they, they can directly see the, uh, some of the, um, temporary shelters as well as, uh, they're, they're feeling uncomfortable, um, as well. And on top of that, uh, the, the, I guess, main concern is that some of the folks there are trespassing the properties as well. So it's kind of a, you know, they, they are going through, uh, the residents' properties to go to that location as well on the, on the way. So, you know, it's kind of twofold issue there. Uh, on top of that, I believe, uh, we've passed our temporary shelter bylaw, uh, which mentions that, you know, even in town, I believe doesn't matter whether private or public property, that you can stay, um, for a certain number of days, right? So I believe you have the teeth on that. You, you might correct me on that, but, um, I would like to know.
Right. That, you, you are correct, uh, in your, uh, analysis of, of the situation. Um, but before we take that to court, uh, we fight that out in court, we want to make sure that we have a good chance to win it. Uh, so that's why we're getting a legal, a legal opinion. And once we get that legal opinion, then I'll be able to provide more information about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, is there anything that we could do? Uh, I know I received a few calls from Seasons just from people not feeling safe walking in the area. Is there anything that we could do? Maybe this was the question I should have asked when Ryan was here, um, to, I guess, increase that feeling of security and safety in the area?
Uh...
Like we have lighting all the way around Seasons, right? There's, oh yeah, because we were there yesterday. There's lighting all the way around. Um, I guess maybe, could we do a, a comms piece even in, just in respect, um, to, to like other homeless camps, just maybe even talking about, you know, if, if somebody is, you know, on your property, please report trespassing. If there's a crime that's being committed in your area, break-in theft, please report. Otherwise, you know, um, you know, Counselor Kamana is saying that, you know, that some of these individuals are going on to property. So, you know, in my opinion, that needs to be reported, right? Because then Ryan doesn't know that and then we don't have a record of that. So then when we talk about, you know, increase to disturbance or crime or something, we don't have that on records. We don't really know that it's happening. I know that there's a lot of talk in that area of town. So for me, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how we can mitigate this, how we can help, you know, and what's kind of happening up there. So I don't know if, like a little comms piece to remind people that, you know, just like when we had the bike index, if something's being stolen, you need to make sure that we're reporting it being stolen. So then when we see an individual riding your bike or with your lawnmower, that they'll be charged, right?
Yep. We can definitely, uh, do a communication piece on that, uh, as well as we can, uh, work with the RCMP to do more frequent patrols in that area. Um, so, yeah, we can, we can work on a few things like that.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I guess the answer right now unfortunately is waiting to hear back from, um, our lawyer to what our ability as a municipality is and kind of where we stand and then going from there. Counselor Evans, did you have a question or comment?
So if we get a legal opinion that we can do something with these folks, um, is, is that ultimately the, the plan to get them off of these lands? Um, and, and again, try and consolidate them all out in the, in the same place? Uh, and, and secondly, does our community standards not, not cover the mess that's, that's out there? Um, could we start ticketing the, the landowner? I understand that, you know, you can't see it from a public road. Well, just because it's, it's not easily seen, uh, doesn't mean that it's not a, a mess in there.
So, um, I was out there last week and we walked the whole area. Um, it's a camp. I wouldn't consider it to be a, a mess. Uh, yes, they have some garbage that they, they need to clean up and, and in consultation with the people that are there. That was part of our direction is to clean up the garbage that's there. Uh, I wouldn't consider it to be in the same condition that we find out by the dump. Um, they, they keep it relatively clean. However, there, as I said, there is some garbage that needs to be cleaned up there and not, as part of the community standards bylaw, that will be part of what we will focus on is making sure that that part of it is clean. The difficult part that we have is we are then going to displace people from their own land onto public land by moving them out to the dump. How, how are the courts going to look at that? Um, and that's the difficult part that we are trying to work on right now with our, our lawyers.
Are all the people on that land, uh, family members?
I can't say 100%. The people that we have been in contact with are family members. I'm not sure if, if all of them are, but, uh, the people that we were in contact with are.
I, I, as far as the what's, what's junk and what's not, I think, Tom, if I set up a, a tarp tent on my front yard, uh, you'd probably get a call that that was unacceptable. Um, I understand these folks are in a tough situation. Uh, you know, I just feel that we're, we're starting to go down that, okay, they're, they're popping up here and they're popping up there and we're gonna have to, before it gets going too far, I just hate to see us in that same spot where we're, we're coming to you folks every week. Okay, can you go in here and, and, and clean up this, this bunch or clean up that bunch? And so I, I get that it's a little different, this situation. Um, but for me, the bottom line is if, if, if that, the folks who own that land are gonna let that land be used in that way, we should be paying attention. And if we, uh, if we need to enforce our, um, our bylaw, um, if, if that isn't acceptable, what's out there, then, then I think we need to, we need to do that and start ticketing them or whatever the case may be. They need to be responsible, uh, if they let this encampment sort of establish itself and, and grow out there, e-even if they are family members.
Right.
Thanks.
And as I said, it's not like we're not gonna deal with it. We just want to get a legal opinion first on, on the best way to proceed.
Thank you for that. Counselor Kamana?
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. Um, you know, I'm, I'm very sympathetic of, of their situation. Um, they need to live somewhere. The problem is that this is very close to a housing development. There's about 40 odd houses there and what happened, uh, the, at the dump, uh, last week, uh, the residents are uneasy, having that encampment there, um, a-as well as, uh, they, of course, wanted to live a regular life, you know, with, with this. You know, with this being difficult for them as taxpayers to live, right? So in my personal opinion is that is not the place for something like this. It would be, if it further on the town, it could be something that we can discuss and figure out what the best option is.
Sure.
And then can you just clarify too, if there was a couple fires over the weekend that had happened in homeless encampments?
We just had one, and that was over by the dump area. And it was one of the individuals living out there. It was their shelter that caught on fire. From time to time, that does happen there. The concern that we have right now is we're getting a lot of residents phoning in, complaining about fires in there. And when we arrive, it's just a small campfire. And I think there's an underlying element that people want to move them or want to get them out there. So they're thinking, okay, well, if we call the fire department enough times, then something will be done about it. Which is really, we're pulling our paid-on-call staff away from jobs and everything else to go and deal with something that's not really an issue. So that's a little bit concerning. It's not just out at the dump. We've also had situations down at the Lions Park where the same thing has happened. We've had some unhoused individuals there just sitting, minding their own business, having a small fire, and then someone calls the fire department down there when really there was no issue. So that's happening as well.
It's unfortunate, as councillor Evans had said, that, you know, getting out of hand, and it is where it is, and it does feel like it's getting out of hand. It feels like, you know, over the years, we didn't have homeless, right? And then we had eight, and then we had our numbers have gone everywhere from, I don't know where we're at, 30, 40. And it seems like we have a lot of these encampments. And I think to the residents, it does appear that we're just turning a blind eye a lot of the times. Like, what are we doing? But also, our hands are tied in a lot of the instances. And then, like you said, we, you know, we go and we tear down a camp, and they just go and set it up somewhere else. So they're sleeping in vestiges. And, you know, as Ryan had said, and we don't have a solution unfortunately. And I really wish that we did. I really wish that we were the municipality that solved it all and figured it out, and this wasn't going on. But unfortunately, it seems to be a growing concern and a growing problem for everybody. And I think that our role is our role, and we can get legal advice. We can remove them. We can try to do what we can do. I think that, you know, definitely, we need to enforce. Again, it's like trying to get water from a stone. But I think, you know, at least you have to try the enforcement. You have to try, you know, if they're trespassing, if they're committing a crime, if they're doing all that, we have to try our best. But also, I think as a community, we have to try to solve it together, right? Like, I think even for the residents, the business owners, if you have an idea, if you have a solution, like, we have to do it. It's all of our community. We all live here. We all don't want this happening in our backyard. We don't want to be living next to this. So I think as a community, we got to figure out how we can deal with it the best that we can, you know, because we don't have an answer. And it's just very unfortunate. It's frustrating, because I'd like to end this conversation with, this is what we're going to do, and this is what's going to happen. But it's not how it's going to end today. So to be continued, I guess, right? It's ongoing and it's unfortunate. So I don't know if anyone else has any comments or questions, councillor Evans?
Yeah, I agree with you, Madam Mayor. And, you know, I think in the end, we've got a few troublesome unhoused people. And I agree. I think we need to start dealing with them, even though it may be a bit of a stopgap measure. If we start enforcing trespassing, but maybe it will address the three or five or seven troublesome folks who, you know, again, as the RCMP let us know, these folks have been kicked out of the warming center and the pods. And that's their responsibility in the end. Even though that may be due to some, you know, mental health issues maybe, whatever the case may be, the bottom line is they're making it difficult for our residents. And I would be in support of clamping down on those troublesome ones. I realize you're in a bit of a tough position with this one, Tom, with it being a family member on private property. But the bottom line for that, for me, again, is there's a standard that you need to keep your property to. That's fine. I understand. They're probably trying to do the right thing for their family member. But, you know, if they want to put a permanent residence on there of some sort, that meets the requirements for this family member, then by all means do it. But letting a family member and others come in and throw up tarps and set up an encampment there, to me, is not an acceptable development on a private piece of property, understanding that you're going through the proper steps to make that happen. So that was more of a comment than a question, but it's my thoughts on the matter.
Yeah, I just wonder if you couldn't, you know, talking about development too, if you couldn't even approach it at the way of a stop order, right? Like, as development has happened without a permit kind of sense, right? I guess the lawyer will let us know what our options are when that time comes. So there's no other questions. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. Next up I have on my list is, we have a letter in our agenda package further down as information. It was a letter from the Minister of Transportation and Economic Corridor. It is the denial of the AMWIP and the STIP infrastructure grant, which is very disappointing. That goes along with our 50th project. I know there was a request for Alberta Muni's to have a meeting with the Minister of Transportation. Did we put that request in, and have we received a response yet?
We did put that request in, Madam Mayor, and we have not yet received a response.
Okay. And I'm assuming that if we do, or that this went out, that this was, our grants were on the agenda to speak to? Think that's what we talked about?
I believe so, but honestly, I can't remember that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so I guess if we get the approval on the meeting with the Minister of Transportation, it's why, you know, this happened. It's very disappointing. I know that they're saying in the letter that there was a considerable number of applications under both the programs exceeding the available program budget. But I know that as a municipality, we don't have a lot of revenue besides our tax base. And when we have large capital projects like this, these are the types of grants that we count on to support these projects. And again, I'll just stress the frustration of cities like Edmonton and Calgary that seem to be getting these little pockets of funding for infrastructure projects. And as small, mid-sized towns, we just keep getting denied and just seem to be getting less and less amount of dollars. And it just gets very frustrating and very straining on not only us, but our residents and everybody else. We can't just keep increasing taxes. So hopefully, we get the meeting and we can complain once again. But I don't know how far that'll get us. So that was on my list. And then also, I've received a call. We have the street party coming up next weekend, which is Friday, August 16, which will happen down the main street there. And the ask was if we could open up the street and allow it to be an open liquor license, not just in one confined area. I guess that they reached out to AGLC B, and the response was it's up to the municipality to extend or to amend the bylaw for the day that, and then the Liquor Control Board would grant the permission. So I'm not sure if our community services or who is dealing with the Dretton Valley Community Foundation on this one, if they've heard anything in regards to this?
Well, that would be Mr. Von Klaveren. But I don't recall hearing about that request, Von.
Okay. It did come to me from someone on the board yesterday, just asking what the consideration. It would be nice if you could have the whole street. I know from the one end, they close it off to the other end, that it would be just kind of like a little extended party rather than confined to the one area. I don't know if there's any sort of restrictions or if it would cause or impose any problems.
We can investigate. It's a little late in the game to make a request that large. There's a fair amount of administration that would have to go into that. If we have to amend the bylaw for a day, that would be a council decision. So we don't have a council meeting before that event. But we can have a look at what would be involved. And if there's something we can do, then we'll try. But honestly, it's far too late to make a request like that.
So just wondering, typically for any amendment or change to, even for a temporary bylaw change, would we still need the two weeks' notice for advertising?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, that's something I have to look into.
Okay. Okay. And I think that's it. Does anybody else have anything council-related? If not, then we'll move into department reports. First up is 11.1, Community and Recreation Services Department Report. Mr. Von Klaveren.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the rest of council. This is the department report for the Community and Recreation Services Department. So the first section that you see in there is the ECDC, just highlighting over there that the registration for September seemed to be that we had open spaces still left. They are filling up, and even our two full-time spaces that you see over there are now on the verge of also being filled. So that means that our residents, they find, of course, our daycare spots, and ECDC will be filled up per September again. For FCSS, there was a discussion, of course, already before here. But we see in FCSS, the support services at the Rotary House, a significant increase in people coming in with, basically seeking support for rental opportunities that we have really spares in town. So we see a difficulty with finding rental properties, people coming new to the community or in the community finding new rental spaces. We did follow up with, let's say, our rental community who has rental spaces, and they say they don't have vacancies. And of course, we have reporting that rental amounts went up significantly, which put people, of course, in difficult situations. The events, there are no events listed in there, but you just heard, of course, we talked about the street party. But there are a couple of events coming up that are worthy of highlighting. So the Skate Park Jam is happening tomorrow, August 18, from noon till 4:00 p.m., so come out. It's every year a great event with the youth getting out there and getting also information, but also hang out with each other and see tricks and see people with high skills coming out. August 16, the street party was already mentioned as well. There's also a new event, August 23rd. That's a Friday. The youth hub is organizing a movie in the park, in the Rotary Park. It's a family event, so that Kung Fu Panda is going to start at 8:00 p.m. in the evening over there. For our Omniplex Conference Center, ice is built. That means it's a really early start. But we put in the Omni One Arena ice in, and it's almost ready to go as we speak. That's great, of course. Our new ice season is upon us. The change of the weather, come inside again and enjoy that, but it's soon starting. The pool, we talked about the Olympics. This feels like the Olympics, of course, for our JLC team that goes to the Worlds. So there's a couple of participants, of course, from Dretton Valley, and they take along Alberta people under the wing of our JLC group with Desiree leading the charge. They go to Australia at the end of the month. The fundraising is well underway, and it's going to be awesome. And with the Olympics, of course, swimming is popular. We see that with all our success for the Canadians. I'm pretty sure it will be, again, a great season for upcoming swimming. The other item in there for when we talk about Swimming National Drowning Prevention Week was in the past week, in the end of July. It's an important item, not only, of course, swift water we have, search and rescue, there's another training. So locally, we have more trained people in swift water as well, with the fire department included. But you also see the issues, of course, with floodwaters like in Edson. So it's very important that people be aware that water is dangerous. And that happens, of course, in that week that we basically get some information out to the public about safety in our water environments. Community Services over there, what's not mentioned in there, that I want to highlight it as well, we do support Jesper in their disaster, in the fire, of course, aftermath. There's a lot of emergency support services requirements for the locals over there. They operate out of Hinton with that, and we have at the moment two people supporting that. They piggybacked with two others that started already on Saturday. But we do support those efforts by sending our staff as well on a schedule that they request. And it's great, of course, to help out, but it's a very important function for our neighboring communities to do that with each other. Under facilities, there's always a lot going on, of course, in the summertime as well. The install of the Omniplex banners, part of the beautification. And we also saw the paint job on the branding on the Omniplex over there already as well. So you'll see, and you think like, what is different when you drive onto the parking lot? It's the blue color now over there. So those are the items, and if there's any questions, happy to ask.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions? No, thank you very much.
I do have a question that I just had on a separate page. But I was by the disc golf, the Ivan Toad Disc Golf, and people are playing and managing. Are we moving in? Do we have a different strategy about bridges and things like that? Are you working on that piece?
Thank you for the question, councillor McGee, and to the rest of council. So yes, we are working on that as a capital request project. So in budget time, we'll see that come over. We did request quotes for the install of bridges that are basically compliant. And of course, we are having to deal with the landscaping around that as well. So that will come in budget time as a budgetary request.
In the meantime, it's open, and people are golfing. The extra nine holes, I guess.
That's right. So, yeah, people find their way, of course, throughout the disc golf course. They know the area. So in the past, before the bridges were there for a little bit, people jumped, people walk over, or people walk around the creek, because that's the biggest issue, of course. So it's possible to utilize the course still.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. And I just realized the time. I think I'll call a five-minute, 10-minute break. Everyone's saying thank you, before we move on with the rest of our reports. Perfect. And we'll jump back into our department reports. Ms. Shelley Tieri, Municipal Services Department Report, you are up.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council. So I'll start with utilities. Veolia came to the water treatment plant for a tour and collected data for the province of Quebec, which is updating their regulations for water treatment. So they requested some of our semi-annual results as well as our annual report. So we just supplied them with our annual report. It's public knowledge anyway, so that they could use that data to help support their fight to get membranes approved within Quebec. June monthly water use reporting was submitted. We submitted our quarterly effluent regulatory reporting. Waste Water Treatment Facility has passed the last two acute lethality samples. We actually had an opening in the lab for August 1st, so we sent our next sample in August 1st, not the 7th, which is today. And we are pleased to say that we passed that one as well. So we are now out of accelerated sampling. We have submitted an application for a temporary authorization to release that would potentially allow us to stop doing the acute lethality testing until the waste water treatment facilities has been upgraded. So that's just pending right now. They're reviewing our application. Some of our manhole covers on our storm system had blown off during that heavy rain event that we had. Staff were quick to respond and get them all back on. Associated engineers, as well as Pembina Valley Water Corp. out of Saskatchewan, came for a tour of the water treatment plant as well, looking to implement membranes into one of their facilities. Parks, Parks has been busy working on keeping up with the watering of the flowers, especially through that heat wave. We had multiple crews out trying to keep those alive. Crews have been working on keeping up with grounds maintenance at the CETC for all the planned wetting events. Mowing operations slowed down during the heat wave, but due to the rain events we just recently had, the grasses started to grow again, so cutting has commenced again. Crews helped Omniplex with some of the beginning of hockey season. Crews helped Omniplex with some of the beginning of hockey season painting while we were experiencing extreme heat waves coupled with the poor air quality. Crews had helped or have been working on line painting in the Omniplex parking lot and continue with that, and will continue with that weather pending. Crews have also been working on training more staff on our watering equipment. Crews completed rotor tilling parks that contain sand, as well as the beach volleyball court that was implemented last year. Garbage pickup maintenance is ongoing, and tree maintenance is ongoing in some of our parks. We've identified some branches that are hazards, so we've been clearing those. Public Works, mowing of large green spaces, started again after the last rain event. They started growing again as well. Many Level Five trip hazards on sidewalks have been identified based off the 2018 sidewalk assessment. Some of these trip hazards can be mitigated by grinding the sidewalk down until we can complete a replacement of these sidewalks. Public Works crews have been working on mitigating these trip hazards all over town. Street sweeping is in full force, especially after that rain event. We had quite a bit of the alleyways wash onto our roads, so we've been working on cleaning all that up. DeBee Park cleanup, so there was still some portions of DeBee Park that needed to be cleaned up. So we've been working on that. It was dry enough that we were able to get into some of those locations that we couldn't before. Tree watering maintenance has been ongoing. Grading of back alleys after the rain event, we've identified some damages, so that's been ongoing as well. A tree at the cemetery was struck by lightning, and as a result, the top of the tree broke off and landed on a motorized scooter that was parked beneath it. So that, yeah, we didn't really know, because the tree looked healthy. So we were, what happened, I'm not really sure. So once we got up there, we could clearly see visible scorch marks, burn marks on the tree that indicated it had been struck by lightning. Cemetery landscaping will be continuing this week. Landfill and engineering, so operations are getting a quote to haul concrete pile in landfill to Metal Next facilities so they can crush it. So we do get payment from Metal Next for all of that. I think they pay us about $7.25 a ton for our concrete. Service agreement for the snow dump design has been awarded to WSP, and we'll be performing a site visit shortly. AEP A visited the landfill on July 25th to look at new proposed cell location with our approval renewal, and that went very well. AEP A asked us if we could accept waste from the Jasper wildfire, as they will need multiple locations to facilitate this waste. We did agree that we could take some of that waste, of course, for a cost, but we will take it. Regular landfill operations ongoing, monitoring the active cell, especially Cell 4E, to make sure that at the end of the day, cover has been completed, and the cell or placing of the grizzly plate has been completed. Monitoring leachate measurement levels according to the AEP approval. Forty-third Street Bio-Swale will be completed this week, according to construction team for 50th Ave. Adco will still, oh, Adco still work? That's not what that's supposed to say. Adco will be completing the work as of August 2nd, and road construction will start after the long weekend. And all other updates are within my project status reports. I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions?
Can I touch on 50th a little bit more?
Absolutely.
So after discussions with Adco, the gas relocation between Forty-third Street and Beckett Road will not get completed this year. It would not get completed in time for school to start, and we just can't block off both of St. Anthony's parking lots. So that portion of the road will be pushed to 2025 indefinitely.
Is there an increase in costs now that the project's being?
We haven't discussed that yet. There is discussions right now with border paving about there could be potentially some mobilization costs, but he doesn't foresee any increase in the cost of the roadwork. But I will let you guys know as soon as I know more.
And if there is an increase in the roadwork, would that fall on Adco?
Uh, no, it wouldn't. Not, we can have that discussion, but we can try, but generally, no. We're hoping our contingency within the project can cover that cost, so we don't have to ask for any additional funds, but.
Wasn't the original, I'm just trying to remember back, I guess, scope of work? How do I say it? Originally, didn't Adco have one year to complete or one year to do something from the date? So wouldn't this fall under?
That's not how the agreement works. The agreement works is that the municipality has to give them one year notice of any project before, so that we didn't have to cover the cost of that relocation. So.
Oh, so that was for the relocation cost? So what about costs associated with that relocation cost now that it's being extended to another year, and that could potentially increase our paving or road construction?
I will look into our agreement a little bit further, and I'll report back to you guys on the next council meeting to kind of confirm. Once we figure out some other things within that as well, I'll let you guys know everything at the next regular council meeting.
Okay. And will we be putting out a comms piece, just so people know that? Because I think that what we communicated was this is the second half of the project will be completed, so now that there'll be a phase three of the project, and this is the reason why.
So in our original post, because we weren't sure, because Adco hadn't released any design drawings or anything or any timelines for that section of the road, we did put in there that it was still in the preparation phases, basically. So we will update on the next report out to the public.
Okay.
That potentially, well, that is being pushed to 2025 now.
Okay. Any questions? Counselor Evans?
So the wastewater, you're applying so we don't have to do the lethality testing because we've passed these few and we have plans to upgrade.
So they had reached out to us to say that we could potentially get an authorization to release, just because they see that we're working towards an upgrade. We know what the problem is.
Yeah.
So basically, just to save the municipality some costs on those tests. There's no point in us continuing accelerated. Now, we will continue our quarterly sampling as per our schedule, just to confirm the quality of our wastewater, but we would never be put back into an accelerated sampling regime.
Right, right. Okay, good, good. And I'm curious, folks coming from Quebec, Associated Engineering, Pembina Valley Water Corp., they're all coming to see your water plant. There's lots of membrane plants around, is there, is there not? I've worked in a couple myself, but I just find it curious that everybody's coming to Drayton Valley. Is there a reason for that or just a connection somehow?
We've made it on the map, just because it's a state-of-the-art facility, so people want to come and see it, just because of that. So of course, we're a really good example for Viola on how we perform in our operations and how we found efficiencies with our chemicals cleans and things like that. So they really like to use us as an example of what to do. So it's kind of nice to have these individuals coming, these stakeholders coming around to look at.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And that all improves your relationship with the province as well.
Absolutely.
I think it's all, all good stuff. Did we indicate to AEP A a maximum that we would accept from Jasper? That would be my only concern there, is that they say, oh, we got a place to go, and we see convoys of stuff.
No, we did not. But we can limit the amount we can accept, so I'll have further conversations.
At least a conversation, yeah. Just to make sure they don't, you know, because if everybody along the way says, no, no, we don't have room, I just wouldn't want to see us. We'd get really hammered.
I think their goal is to spread it out amongst multiple landfills, so we won't be the only ones accepting waste. It's just they wanted to.
We hope, anyway. Yeah, that's the plan. And I get it. I just think, yeah, if we sort of put an upper limit on there, then they'll know.
No more after this.
They can't really hammer us too bad. The line that Adco's not going to put in now, or is delaying on, is that, are they just lowering that line? Or is there other components to that, to that piece?
It's a complicated piece, so it does, it does go down, and then at 90s, and then at 90s. And so it runs down kind of both sides of that road. Plus, with all of the other underground utilities within that location, it is a lot more complicated on how they're going to get that alignment. So I can understand where their delays are on that, trying to figure out everything for.
Fair enough. I was just thinking, if all they got to do is drop it, can we open it up enough to let them drop it and then just patch that or whatever we had to do until we got back to it next year? But that's not doable, obviously. Yeah, what's with the scooter parked under the tree? Did somebody leave their scooter out at the cemetery or?
No, this happened during actual funeral.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. All of a sudden, a gust of wind, of course, it was weak at that point.
I see.
And then it just cracked.
I see.
And fell, yeah.
So it wasn't the lightning, tree fell over, hit the scooter, the lightning, and then much time later.
Yep.
Flew over.
Yep.
Okay, that satisfies my curiosity. I will just say this, though. Shelley, yeah, the street sweepers being out there here and there, I think the roads are looking pretty good, pretty clean for the most part. I think the town's doing good, and your people are working hard to try and keep on top of it. So kudos to you and Public Works and Utilities.
Thank you. Counselor Comanet?
Thank you. I would like to echo that as well. Relatively speaking, I think we are getting much less phone calls and texts this year than any other. So thank you very much, Shelley, for that. About the AMVIP grant and the 50th project, what kind of impact, if any, or how do we proceed? I guess it's a salvera question, maybe, too.
Well, the way we did it, we didn't know if we were going to be successful on that grant. So it was all based off of debenture. So 50th Ave and the distribution project will be debentured based off the total cost of the project, because we didn't know if we'd get grant funding at that time. Would have been nice if we got grant funding to offset that cost. Now, for the distribution project, I'm going to put in again, because it's been delayed now till 2025, so we may have another opportunity at it. So I'm going to try again.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you.
And maybe that's a comment that we can, or a conversation piece, if we do get that meeting with the minister, right? Is that three years into the project? Maybe we could get a little bit more.
Yeah, they are going to get hit with two grant applications from us, one for the wastewater upgrades as well. So it's going to be a tough one to still get, but why not try?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yes, you're doing a fantastic job, so thank you very much for everything that you're doing. Like Counselor Comanet said, we're not receiving near as many phone calls as typically we do, so thank you for that. And the flowers, again, look absolutely beautiful. I've been parking in the front, and every time I come in even to the town office, I'm just amazed at the hanging flowers and the baskets are so beautiful, and community is looking clean, so thank you for that. Kind of going back to Viola coming to the water treatment plant, are we going to be celebrating? I know that we've received awards and everything else. Like you said, we're kind of a big deal here. So are we going to celebrate that or, you know, do a comms piece? Or, you know, kind of let people, let the community know that this is something that we should be proud of?
We can absolutely look into that. I will reach out to these individuals before we do a release like that, just to make sure that they're okay with us.
Yeah, or when they're here, if we could take some pictures and say, you know, we'd like to share this and, you know, celebrate that you're here looking at how amazing our water treatment plant is or something.
I am lining up another tour right now, so there'll be another one coming in the near future. So I'll talk to Jen, we'll strategize and try to figure out something.
Do we get, yeah, that's right. Do we get or have the ability for residents to tour the facility?
Absolutely. We encourage it. It helps educate people on how we do things. I think it's beneficial to the entire community.
Okay, great.
We do do tours for schools quite frequent, so yeah, we're open to doing tours for sure.
Okay, good to know. And then one last question. AEP A and accepting waste from the Jasper wildfires. I guess my question or concern here is that we're making a profit off of something that's so devastating. This isn't, is it, I guess, wildfire dollars? Like, how is that? How, I wouldn't want to put an extra burden on, you know, Jasper. How does that kind of work, that we're helping them out, but?
Well, unfortunately, with landfills, like, we need to be able to recover our costs and to be able to upgrade another cell. So we have to, we have to take, they have to pay for that to come in. There's no way around it. Plus, we have liabilities that we have to maintain after that cell is done, so we need to be able to maintain those as well.
Yeah. Mr. Ferris? And that's where I just want to make sure that they're getting the funding, you know, yeah.
We don't know the details of that, Madam Mayor, but assuming that the province is going to step in, just like they did to help the town and the county with their costs.
And expenses, okay. Perfect. Okay, thank you very much for your report.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have Growth Services Report, 11.3. Good morning.
Good morning. For the Growth Services Department Report, starting with economic development, just wanted to make a quick note that Economic Development is our, Economic Developers Alberta, in partnership with Community Futures, did reach out about hosting a community resilience workshop here in Drayton on October 1st, 2024, at no cost for 15 to 20 people, and asked to partner with the town on that. And so in talking to them about it, it's just a matter of seeing what that sort of partnership would look like, what would provide to them for it. And so we're just talking to them about it, and, you know, if it's something substantial, we can for sure bring that forward to council for consideration. We have also reached out to KPMG over a discussion to rectify some of the issues and concerns noted by council over their report. And yeah, and so in talking to them, they did brief us that they will provide some document on what those proposed changes will be, and so that's something.
It's quite noisy out there today. I don't know what's going on, what they're building.
Sorry about that, council. It's the installation of the security cameras out there that's happening.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Gundy.
Yeah, so regarding KPMG report, that's something we can, we'll certainly bring back to council and see what that looks like. Apart from that, the Rural Nurse Program remains active still, and to date, we have around 304 employee applications. Now, on the education side, through a recommendation from Alberta Health Services and the University of Calgary, the town has re-engaged conversations with the Red Deer Polytechnic regarding the Licensed Practical Nurse Program. And so we're just trying to figure out an approach to integrate both the ALPN and the RMM program. And this time around, I guess we have AHS and RDP on board with that suggestion. And so it's just about trying to figure out what that looks like exactly. And so we will resume discussions around January for that. Apart from that, we are working to renew our lease agreement with Northern Lakes College. In partnership with the University of Alberta, we did deliver an education workshop on the 29th with over 20 participants attending, and which helped us quite a bit in just getting some feedback. And so this is something we'll for sure bring forward to council again. And last but not least, within education, we are also planning a Drayton Valley Outdoor Play and Natural Connection event in partnership with ECDC and Get Outside and Play for November at the CETC. So the event incorporates games and storytelling to connect children to the natural world, and it's specific to daycare facilitators. And now on the sustainability side, regarding the Clean Energy Improvement Program, we did receive funds through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities last week for delivering the program, which is great. And regarding the program itself, to date, we have five applications and two local vendors participating in the program, which is something we're looking for, and we're just hoping we'll get more. And that pretty much sums up the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions? Counselor Sheriffs?
Hi, Gundy. I was just wondering if you can talk a little bit about the Clean Energy Improvement Program, like what it is, what it involves, and such, yeah?
Yeah, certainly. So the Clean Energy Improvement Program is a financing program, in essence, through the town. Yeah, certainly. So the Clean Energy Improvement Program is a financing program in essence, uh, through the town in partnership with, uh, FCM and Alberta Municipalities. That allows for residents here in Drayton Valley to basically apply for financing to make, um, residential upgrades to their home, clean energy residential upgrades. So this can include, um, windows, solar panels, doors, anything at all that make their house a little more efficient. And, uh, in applying for financing to the town, this will be applied to their taxes, which will be paid over the course of time. And so it's just a great way for residents to make upgrades that they might not otherwise have and not have to worry about the upfront costs. And, uh, so, yeah, it's a really great program and, uh, something we're just looking for people to take a part in.
Mm-hmm. And I know I've asked this before and I, I've had either you or Vera, somebody explain that. But it's just for people online that they know that we have it available and it exists and it's easily accessible. Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, just a comment that, um, in regards to our Healthcare Aid Program, when does that program start? Uh, through Healthcare Aid Academy, the next cohort?
Uh, through to your worship. So we currently do have a cohort and that started in April. And so the next cohort, we would expect to start in September. And so we are right now just revising their agreement with Healthcare Aid since it does, um, end at the end of this month. And so we're just trying to work that agreement and just have them be a part of the building continuing.
Okay, um, so there was an interested, um, uh, person or interested in the instructor, um, advertisement for that program. And I had made the connection with, uh, Dan and Carla and they still haven't followed up. Could you just follow up and just to make sure that, um, they're connecting with this individual? And I know that was one of the things that we were really trying to stress is we really want to see that in-person component when it comes to the Healthcare Aid Program, um, so that they're teaching and utilizing the CTC and things like that. So if there is an opportunity for an individual in our community, you know, to be the instructor, that would be fantastic. So if you could just follow up and if you need the name details, we can just connect after maybe and I can give that to you.
Absolutely.
Be perfect. Uh, no other questions? Thank you very much for your report. And next or last for, um, department reports is the Fire Department Update Report, 11.4.
Good morning.
Good morning again. So just to, uh, give council a few updates on what's been happening with the fire service. Uh, we've been, uh, working on our, uh, summer programming through our kids camp program. This is the 10th year that we have put this program on and, uh, every year it's, uh, sold out. Uh, it's, uh, we just, uh, ran one of the camps last week in, at Station Two in Breton with, uh, it was a lot of fun and a huge success. Um, but a lot of this doesn't happen without the sponsorship that we get from the community, uh, who, uh, who just, uh, do a fantastic job helping us out with these programs. Um, not only providing support in terms of snacks and, and food for the kids, but also as well, um, providing funding to support some of our lower income kids, uh, the ability to attend. So I, I really appreciate, uh, the, all of our sponsors that, uh, that help out with the program. In regards to staffing, we've had a few, uh, issues with, uh, staffing. We had hired a Deputy Fire Chief of Operations and then, uh, had them in the seat for two days. And they, uh, then they unfortunately resigned due to family, du- due to a family situation. So we are now in the process of, uh, hiring, uh, Deputy Fire Chief again. So that's going to take us a few months. So we're back to square one. As well, one of our paid-on-call staff, Cole Starling, um, has, uh, accepted a, uh, position with the, uh, city of, should say, city of Red Deer, supposed to county. Uh, he's going to be a chief officer there. So, uh, we wish Cole all the best. Um, he is, uh, moving that position. Uh, he is also part of Task Force Two, uh, which is the elite group of emergency services personnel that go to emergencies, uh, in the, throughout the province and other parts of Canada. Uh, he has just spent approximately a week to a week and a half in Jasper as the Ops Chief there, helping them deal with their, their fire that, uh, that they have going on. So we wish Cole all the best and I know he'll be, uh, very successful in that position. In regards to deployments with the, the department, as council is aware, we, uh, just completed a, uh, deployment up north. Um, in Garden, in a place called Garden River, uh, it is, uh, was a 21-day deployment. Uh, so we are back, uh, we are fortunate in the fact that we have a specialized piece of equipment here. It's a Type III fire engine and it's, uh, an engine that can go off-road and can go in the bush and go in the field. So, uh, it is in high demand and we are constantly getting calls from Alberta Emergency Management Agency to deploy that piece of equipment as well as our, our trained staff, trained and experienced staff. So, uh, we've been very busy with that. We are also on standby to go to Jasper. So, um, at some point we'll be heading out there as well to, uh, to spend time helping them out as well. And that completes my report.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions? Council Evans?
So Tom, when we're, when we're deploying this specialized equipment, we're, we're getting paid a rate or whatever. Um, and are we also getting paid, uh, for the move, like a per kilometer rate to run it all the way up to high level? And, and, and lastly, have we considered, I, I, just looking at this, we're, we're going to end up wearing that thing out sooner than we would if we had just kept it here, right? I, I, I guess I'm wondering, should we be looking at when we're deploying it in other municipalities? Um, should we be looking at putting those funds aside? Uh, and start building ourselves a, a fund for replacement of, of, say, this unit? I, I, I just know that fire department equipment is crazy expensive. And if we're wearing our stuff out to help other municipalities, and I'm not against that by any means, um, I, I, I think maybe council should, should consider trying to put some of that, that money away. So we don't get hit with such a big, um, bill when we need to start replacing these things that we're, we're wearing out a little faster than maybe we normally would. I don't know what, what that would look like, but it just seems like, yeah, eventually we're gonna, you're gonna come to us and say, okay, this thing's miled out or whatever, we gotta replace it. Be nice if it wasn't such a, such a hard hit.
Right. So to, to answer your questions, the first question, uh, we are paid all of our fuel. So the province covers a cost for the truck while it's in operation up there. And then we are paid the fuel costs. So, mm, as you said, in terms of mileage, it would be a fuel. We pay, we are paid for the fuel as opposed to the mileage. Uh, we're also paid for the staff or person as we're, while we're up there and all their expenses as well. Uh, in regards to the second part of your, your comments, um, I, I agree 100% that, uh, that money that we are making, we should be putting it aside for, uh, for exactly what you said, to re- replace the equipment as well as replace, uh, vehicles down the road. Yep.
Follow-up.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so we only get paid, uh, we get reimbursed for the fuel that we use from here to where it's got to go.
Correct.
But we don't get a per kilometer rate that covers the, say, maintenance that's, that's required when you're putting on all those kilometers.
Right. No, we don't get paid per kilometer. However, the, the truck hours, um, we're paid per hour on the truck. So that, that covers the maintenance.
Okay, and that includes the trip up there?
Y- yeah.
The hours on the truck?
The hours on, yeah.
Cause that's a, that's a, that's a pretty good, uh, pretty good trip. You took it to Garden River?
Yep.
That's a, that's in the middle of nowhere.
It's, I know, I know. It's a hike.
Close to there. I've been close to there and.
Yeah.
Never got there. I, yeah, that's a, that's quite an experience, I'm sure, for your guys.
Yeah, there was, they, they were taking pictures of some of the bugs that they, uh, came in contact with up there. Yeah. Quite substantial.
Yeah, I inspected a culvert once up there and, uh, by the time I got to where the culvert was, you could barely see my hands for the mosquitoes. And I was scraping them off.
Yeah.
Like constantly, crazy. Anyway, thanks for that, Tom. I just, uh, yeah, just wanted to confirm that stuff.
Uh, so you did say, Tom, that that money was being put in a reserve, the money that?
So this is kind of the, the first, uh, we, we did it a little bit last year. Uh, and because a lot of the, the costs that we had with our own fire, a lot of the, the, the revenue that we generated went back into paying for our own, own costs. So this is kind of the first year that we've been asked to deploy, uh, frequently. Uh, and, and so we're in the, we haven't quite got to that point of, of where we're, where we're going to put the money and how we're going to deal with that. That's a conversation I still have to have with finance about how, how all that will play out. Um, obviously some of it will be to pay for the, um, the personal protective equipment that we, uh, send our firefighters up with. Uh, but as well, we should be looking at, uh, putting it in a reserve to, to pay for the, the trucks and stuff.
Okay, did you have a comment, Mr. Ferris, on that?
Just gonna, if I may, just gonna add to, uh, to Chief's comments that, uh, we currently don't have a reserve on that. So if, um, if council so wishes in, um, probably September or as we begin budget, if you want to create that reserve and drive, um, uh, some of those funds there, because I think we have to recover some expenses on the PPE replacement, et cetera, then, uh, we can establish policy and reserve fund to do just that.
Yeah, I think it's important, like Council Evans had said, is that the wear and tear on the vehicle will eventually catch up. So it'd be nice if there was a little, some extra dollars in there to help with that, for sure.
Yep.
Uh, Council McGee, did you have a question?
Um, just, uh, the truck that went up to Garden River, is, was that the, uh, the, the truck that can go, uh, through fields and stuff?
Correct, yeah.
And do you haul it up there or drive it up?
Drive it up.
Have you looked at the cost of hauling it?
Uh, no, uh, part of that is also though getting personnel up there as well. So when it originally goes up there, it goes up there with a crew of people. Um, so if we're, if we were getting it trucked up there, then we'd also have to drive a vehicle up there anyway to get, get the personnel up there.
Okay. Um, the, uh, the other thing about, um, your deployment to Garden River, uh, is that volunteers or is it just paid people?
Uh, we have had full-time staff go up there, but, uh, the, the bulk of the staff are paid-on-call volunteer staff.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Okay, thank you very much for your report. And we're making a little note of when it comes up to budget discussion, that we'll add this for, uh, discussion topic. Okay, that is it for, uh, department reports. Next up is council reports. Council Commander, you are up first.
Perfect, thank you. Um, I'd like to hold up the report. Uh, 25th, uh, I had the opportunity to, uh, go to the BCG ribbon cutting with the rest of the council. It's great to see, uh, that, uh, they've got this grant from provincial government and they're gonna hopefully expand their operations as well because of that. 29th, I had the opportunity to go to the education workshop, uh, at CTC. It was very well organized and lots of great discussions. I'm sure we'll hear more about it, uh, the outcomes from Kundi and the Economic Development Team, um, in the near future. Uh, on the 31st, I attended the Health Foundation Meeting for the Month and, uh, discussed about, uh, progress of, uh, palliative care unit, uh, as well as, uh, ESIM Lab as well. And, uh, on the 3rd, uh, my son turned 10 and we had a party. So that's it for me.
Well, happy birthday. Uh, for the ESIM Lab, can you kind of give us an update on where it is? And when is expected to be kind of completed or we're still in the process of raising dollars? Or can you maybe just give us a little bit more on that?
Um, yes, so the Health Foundation and the Auxiliary, uh, they are partnering for, um, ESIM Lab as well as the, um, um, palliative care projects. So their caveat was that palliative care projects need to be first and then, uh, deal with the ESIM Lab after. I believe they are still, uh, struggling with, I think that's the right word, to say, struggling with the palliative care unit, uh, getting that going. So, um, it's kind of in a limbo as of now, the, um, ESIM Lab.
Okay, thank you for that. I thought the palliative care was all wrapped up and kind of we were going to be celebrating the opening of that, but we're not quite there yet. Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Deputy Mayor Evans?
Yes, a pretty light couple of weeks for me, which is, let me get caught up with some work at home, which is kind of nice. Uh, I also attended the, the, uh, BCG, uh, ribbon cutting and took a little tour, walk around there, which is always so interesting. I've done it before, but, uh, yeah, it's amazing, the equipment that they've, uh, put in there, modified, adjusted, uh, added, uh, to, uh, to create the, the, the things that they do. It really is, uh, impressive what they've, uh, what they've put together out there. Uh, and then other than that, just the agenda setting logic, August 1st. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Council Sheriff?
Um, it's been pretty slow on my end. I only had a meeting with the, uh, Brazil Senior Foundation. And other than that, I guess everybody's taking summer break. So nothing really interesting on my end.
Thank you for that. Council McGee?
Um, really just the BCG and congratulations to, uh, Dan and Brenda and, uh, their group, uh, as they, uh, as they move forward. It, it could be really quite exciting, um, in the next year's time. It's, uh, yeah, it was a great opportunity.
Thank you for that. Yeah, me as well attended that. And like everyone's saying, it's going to be, uh, exciting to see, um, them expand their business. Uh, as, uh, both Dan and Rob had mentioned, I don't think we celebrate enough that, uh, Biocomposite Group is the largest manufacturing of hemp in North America. So I don't think they, they get enough, uh, attention, uh, when it comes to them. So it's nice to see that, uh, they were successful in this grant application along with the Town of Drayton Valley and the Alberta Hemp Alliance. So it'll be nice to see the business expand and the employees increase and to see all the amazing things that they're going to be doing down there for sure. Um, just had a couple gala meetings and finalizing that, which is happening on September 19th. There's, uh, many organizations, businesses and individuals in the community that we will be celebrating and highlighting along with remembering our past and, and, uh, current mayors and council. MLA meeting, um, and just trying to coordinate, we have the premier coming in for hopefully our street party next weekend. Um, so trying to coordinate that meeting. And, um, just a little follow-up with the U of A team, um, after the workshop last week, just to kind of catch up on some of the things that are happening on their end. And just wanted to make a comment that, um, the University of Alberta team has been with us for quite a few years when it comes to our education initiatives and, uh, tracking our zero fee and things like that. So it's nice that they are such big supporters of us and they seem to, um, shout it at the rooftop, rooftops at, um, what an amazing thing we have here. And they help, uh, the community and businesses and individuals, um, understand what we're trying to do when it comes to education. And anytime that we need a hand, they're there to help or to give us, you know, um, you know, funding. We've been partnerships with funding, um, quite a bit of funding and research and everything like that. So they're just a, a really good team, I think, to have along the way with us as long as, as well as, um, a lot of our other, uh, post-secondary partners. And, um, that's it for me too. Like everybody said, it's been a quieter, uh, end of July, beginning of August. And things are going to start to be picking up this next month. Is there a member of council that would like to accept both the department and council reports as information, please? Council Sheriff, thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried. Uh, next up, we have 13.1, which is our project status reports. Uh, are we going to go through this or were there any, um, questions in particular for any of the projects that are ongoing? Or does administration have anything that they wanted to highlight when it comes to our status report?
No, we provide, um, we provide those for, for information. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have, but, uh, if we were going to present each one, I think we'd be here until, until dinner time. So.
Absolutely.
We did highlight, uh, Shelley highlighted, uh, the ACO issue on 50th, uh, what we typically do.
I think that's probably the only one that's really standing out. Does anybody else have any questions in regards to any of the projects that are happening? No? Okay, perfect. Uh, council items. Council items, roundtable discussion. Anything here? Council McGee?
Just only one thing. We should probably combine roundtable and council initiatives and just sort of, because I think they're the, sort of the same idea. I don't know why we don't just do that.
Yep, fair enough. We can do that. Just for myself, Counselor Clark sits on the ECDC Committee Board and he had brought a letter to our attention, I think, a couple of meetings ago. It was in regards to Elevating Early Learning and Childcare in Alberta, a collective responsibility. There was a document that was shared with council. I don't recall it, but I think that Colin had shared it with us and it just needed to get an agreeance that we were wanting to sign that. Well, it's not a letter of support. It was, and maybe Hans, could you speak to this at all? Bernice had sent a letter to Colin and then Colin had responded with, he thought that we had signed it. I don't remember it as coming as an attachment. I remember seeing it as an email, but I don't think that I got a collective nod of heads from council in regards to it. Could you maybe just give us Cole's notes on what the?
Thank you for that and to the chair to the rest of council as well. So, I hope I'm having it right. It's about an editorial piece that's basically a letter reading as information that's been shared in media and possibility for media to utilize an editorial piece that provides other, let's say, aspects and information regarding early learning and childhood. So, it was basically the request to support that and that was the shared earlier. And yes, like Counselor Clark said, it was basically discussed here shortly, but I wasn't 100% sure if that was basically a final decision to support it with a signature or endorsement.
And was the request going to all childcares for them to sign it? Because I know that, that's kind of what it said. The roadmap to quality or early learning and childcare in Alberta outlines specific policy actions in Section Four. And then, it kind of highlights what those include. And then, were they looking to, for everyone that had the childcare to sign?
That's correct.
This agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. Thoughts on this? I can kind of tell you what Section Four outlines. Number one, strengthening staffing requirements to uphold international principles of quality in early learning settings. Number two is reviewing and refining certification processes to ensure alignment with best practices in early learning and childcare. Number three, increasing educational and certification requirements to reflect the evolving demands of the profession. And number four is implementing ongoing professional development opportunities to support continuous learning. So, as we embark on the journey, let us reaffirm our collective responsibility to prioritize early learning and childcare as a cornerstone of our communities by investing in the professional development and wellbeing of ECEs. So, they're asking that we sign this agreement and send it in. And I think that the deadline is today.
Madam Mayor, we'll, we'll check the records to see if we've already signed that, if you've already signed that. I, I kind of think it's happened, but Bree's not in, she's off on vacation. So,
Okay.
we'll have to just check to see if something went in.
Okay, perfect. And then, if not, is council's in support, then I can sign it. We haven't signed it. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much for that. Does anybody else have anything? Councilwoman?
Thank you. Not on that. Sorry, I'm just going back to the monthly status reports. I was just wondering if we can add a couple more to that.
Are you talking about the project status report?
Yeah, project status reports. Just wondering if we can add RES to that and see, you know, where we at with that, if we can get an update on that as well as, I know we've discussed in our strategic plan about the progress of a welcome center as well. So, if we could
What?
Welcome center for, for the newcomers. That's on our strategic plan.
I believe that's an active project, Counselor Commander. Welcome Center, we don't have an active project that staff are currently working on. No.
Okay, that's on our strategic plan. We may have to
The RES is more of an operational item. So, the, I mean, we can, we can talk about adding that for sure. But the Welcome Center is not a project that has funding or resources applied to it.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's need a discussion at some point. Thank you.
Go ahead, Council Sheriff?
Regarding RES, I thought we already all agreed that we will not be looking into that at the moment.
So, the, the motion that we approved is we will work with the Brazu County and if they're on board, we will be working on that. Right?
So, is, is that a direction to administration or are you just suggesting that you will be having, like, I'm, I'm not sure. It's, it's not, it's, it's not happening right now. So, I'm not sure what you're expecting them to do.
If I, if I may interject
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Ferris.
I believe this issue came forward. I, and I'll have to check our past council reports, but I believe the motion was defeated. So, the RES program was not going to move forward.
The first motion was defeated, but there was another motion that Counselor Ballas made and it, it states that to work with the Brazu County and get them on board and if they're on board to proceed with RES.
Right.
Yeah, so the first motion was defeated and then Counselor Ballas had suggested not working with Brazu County, but asking Brazu County if they would be interested. And then, we would bring it back to discuss after. So, there is no action. It's just, I think it was going to be added to. We had a couple of things for joint council, that was one of them, as well as the other thing was the discussion of the zero fee. So, those were, I think, next for our joint council meetings.
What, where I'm getting at is I'm not sure if it should be in our monthly reports.
No, because it's not an active project.
It's not an active project. So, yeah, I don't think they can add that.
Oh, you're, thank you. Sorry. And Counselor Commander, I was confused as it seems to be happening more and more, but I was confused between the RRS, the Rural Renewal Stream versus the RES program. So, yeah, the RES is not an active project yet. There's nothing to really report on that, but the RRS, we could certainly add as a project status report.
Oh, thank you for that and for the RES. I think as, as motion states, we still need to add that to a joint council meeting and move that forward. Thank you.
Any other discussion for initiated items? No? Okay. So, we have four information items, letters. The first is a letter to council, which was, let me just look here which that letter was. They're not in order here. So, we have four letters. First is Town Council Request for Review of the Current Bylaws and Opportunities From a Local Business. The next one is a letter from Rick MacGyver, Minister Rick MacGyver, Municipal Affairs, announcing that Canada and Alberta have signed an agreement reviewing the CCBF funding for 2024. A letter from, or a Opportunity Home Financial Support Letter as well as the AMWIP and the STIP Funding Denial Letter that we received. Is there a member of council that would like to accept these information items or these items as information, please? Council Sheriff, thank you very much for that. And is there a member of council that would like to move us into a closed session for discussion of 16.1 and 16.2? Council McGee, thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried. Mr. Ferris?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry if I missed it, but did we have a motion to accept the project status reports for information?
Yes. Oh, the project status reports? No, we didn't. Okay, thank you very much, Council McGee. Council McGee? Bye, ladies. Enjoy the afternoon. Council McGee made that. And then, we are now on close. So, we'll just